Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education this May 1st, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation on the ground, and in the visible liberty and justice world.
Roll call, please, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Masford.
Here.
Mr. Brunsayet.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Dr. Danny. Mr. Mejia.
Mr. Mejia will be about thirty minutes later, he said.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Commissioner Danny also is a little late, she's running, she said. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate, lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the City Clerk's Office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This message will be, this meeting, will be tape-recorded in accordance with Policy I would like to invite our student representative, if he is in the house this evening. He is, okay, looks like we're missing Mark. I hope all is well with him.
We do have a student here for a public comment, if we want to let her go and...
Okay, Dr. Robertozzi tells me there's a student here who would like...
I think, I think you're here for public comment, but because you're a student and you have to go home and study tonight, Mr. Perez might let you go first.
I would absolutely let you go first. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Anytime.
Good evening, Dr. Robertozzi, Commissioners and Administrators. My name is Emma Batar, and I am a 10th grade student at Clifton High School. I take all honors classes, and I'm a three-sport athlete. I play volleyball, basketball, and softball. I'm also a proud member of the Student Superintendent Ambassador Program and Hero and Cool Kids Club. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the school budget because I know how much it impacts students like me. The honors classes I'm in challenge me every single day. They've helped me grow academically, and I know that they're preparing me for college and beyond. But those classes only work when we have the right resources, the dedicated teachers, the up-to-date materials, and the support that helps us stay on track. Being an athlete is just as important to me. Through volleyball, basketball, and softball, I've learned discipline, leadership, and how to handle adversity. Programs like Heroes and Cool Kids give me the opportunity to use those lessons to help others by mentoring younger students and setting a positive example. But none of that would have been possible without our coaches, our advisors, the uniforms, the equipment, and the safe field and gyms to play and connect in. That support only exists because of the budget you're considering. This budget affects so much more than just numbers. It affects opportunities. It gives students like me the chance to push ourselves, find our passions, and be a part of something bigger. I hope you support this budget, not just for me, but for every single student who's trying to make the most of their time here at Clifton. Thank you for your time and for continuing to support our future.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be moving on to presentations, and the first presentation this evening, I believe, will be the Labor Management Collaborative by Mr. Jaeger and Ms. Marola.
Hi, how are you? I'm Shari Marola, Vice President of the CEA for the Middle School. We have a little fun thing for you guys, because we don't want to just give you a simple, simple presentation. So this is a bingo card, an LMC bingo card, and you're going to fill it out using the words on the bottom.
There's a point involved, too, so you guys are more than welcome to play bingo with us.
And this way, you can have a little fun, so I will give you a present.
You don't have to. Anybody else want to play bingo? Come on. Bingo? Come on.
Bingo, everybody bingo. Bingo, bingo.
All the cool kids are doing it.
No, we're not allowed to have fun.
Go back there, man.
Have a little fun. Everybody needs pens. We've got pens over here.
All right, so the rules of this bingo card is you can pick whatever words on the bottom to fill up your bingo card. So those are our vocabulary words for the day, all right? So make sure that you fill out your bingo card with every word that you think that Shari and I are going to say today. We do have surprises.
We do.
If you need a pen, I have some pens, too.
Mr. McCunney, can you bring Mr. Jaeger and Ms. Marola a microphone, please? Never mind, he has it in his hand.
Does anybody else need pens? That'd be kind of hard to play bingo without a pen.
Right? So we're going to just take a minute, fill it out. What words do you think we're going to say during this presentation, and have a little fun?
Sure, of course. Whatever words that you think we're going to say.
I see you back there. I got, I got one.
Should we fill every space?
Fill every space.
Okay, thank you.
Except for the free space in the middle.
Let the rest of us move.
I could see you're having fun already. I can see it in your faces. People are smiling, people are laughing. I see it. I see you.
Normally, that's not allowed at a Board of Education.
I know.
That's why we pushed this back to May, you know, lighten the, lighten the load a little bit.
And that's why we brought a game. Right? I'm so glad you said that. Okay, so we're going to give you like another minute to fill that out. There's plenty of words. There's definitely enough words. If there isn't, I'm going to leave.
Oh, sweet.
You do, you do.
You totally do.
We're going to give you another twenty seconds, and then we're going to get the party started. And we're on the honor system. There's some words on there that if you choose, I know I'm not going to say, so...
We just wanted to make you laugh. But I am craving a snickerdoodle. I'm just saying.
Does that count? That counts.
Why not?
There are twenty-five words and twenty-five spaces, so...
I'm missing a word.
No pressure. No pressure, but hurry up.
Cross them out when you're used to it.
All right, so again, I'm Andy Jaeger. This is Shari Marola. We're the facilitators of our labor management collaboration in the Clifton Public School District. What labor management is, and this is the only slide that we're going to read, just that first part, is labor management collaboration brings teachers, educators, administrators, and central office staff to focus on student-centered goal. Basically, what that is, is everybody's working together. Everybody has a voice in our district, and at the forefront of every decision that we make is our children in this district. It ensures that all community stakeholders maintain their voice and influence, helping to build consensus, facilitate district-wide cooperation and communication. And Clifton Public Schools is committed to harnessing the benefits of collaboration to create a thriving educational community.
Basically, we're trying to open up lines of communication from admin to all the other stakeholders, and it's, it's been absolutely wonderful, we have to say.
So why do we do this? In the, the words of a mentor, Mr. Jengaro, as an administrator, as an educator, we have to admit that we do not know everything in this world. And we don't know everything that happens within our buildings, in our classrooms, in our hallways, within our district. What our collaboration does is allows us to get all the information we possibly need to be successful and be the best professionals possible for our students.
One thing that it doesn't say on here, because again, we are not going to read every single slide to you, so look out for those words you need, people. But one thing that is not on here is that we are really trying to harness the creativity of a valuable resource, our teachers. Instead of seeing a problem, we want teachers to see solutions and come to admin, teachers, teacher leaders, coaches, come to us to say, hey, I have this great idea, let's try this. And then admin gets really excited because they can put things into place to make teachers excited, to get the teachers, you know, stoked about, you know, teaching, right? So it's, it's really been incredible. I can't say that enough.
What we, what we're, our ultimate goal is to just bring out everyone's creativity, starting with the administrators, teachers, and eventually our students.
Absolutely. Here are some quotes from Lori Lalama, our CEA president, and Danny Robertozzi, our superintendent, speaking about the collaborative and what it's meant to them throughout the four to five years that we've been doing this. Again, we're not reading these to you because we just don't want to be those kind of people.
Ms. Marola, we have a question. If somebody gets bingo, are they supposed to yell it out?
Bingo! One of the premises of our why and what has been shown through Lori Lalama's professional run, as well as Dr. Joseph's leadership, is the trust. And that is one of the biggest things that I think we feel has, as lifelong learners, is being able to trust your boss, your colleagues, and being able to work with that is going to break out that breathing and the best decisions possible for our students. Our district collaborative, collaborative team is quite large. So again, every, every stakeholder in our district is representative. Again, we have central officers, we have administrators. By the way, Happy Principals' Day, Happy Vice Principals' Day to all our APs and VPs and principals in the district. We have our power professionals represented. We have our secretaries, our custodial. We have our teachers. So we started off as a group of about ten to fifteen employees. We are now up to close to forty. So it's a fantastic group, which meets on a local level in our, in our local buildings once a month, and district-wide, we meet four times a year.
Don't forget to yell bingo if you got it. There's plenty of prizes.
I also can't forget the school nurses. The school nurses are represented as well. So the how. What, what does this look like? So throughout the course of Shari and I's tenure, we've always had certain buildings have had certain things in place. Essentially, we've had schools that have worked together close with their faculty for whatever reasons, whether it's being a school in need of improvement, or whether it's just that creativity of that, that teacher and administrator relationship. Oh, yeah, look at that. You're going to be busy. So most of the work that's done through our labor management group is done at the local level, which is in every school. I'm happy to report that every school in our district...
Bingo, bingo, bingo.
That was good. Well done. Well played. Most of the work that is done, is done on the local level in every school building. Clifton Public Schools has a local team in every building in our district where we find any type of idea or problem, and we create that solution, which is, there it is. You've got two up there, Shari. So this is like an umbrella, and I'll show what that umbrella is. So again, we have our local teams, and then we have that district team. And this is what our district collab team looks like. So again, we have our union president and our superintendent who are, are at the very top, but then we break down into each individual school as well as, you know, labor group. Throughout the, throughout the course of my career here, I've been, I've been in the district for twenty-two years. Shari's been here for about fifteen years. We've seen a tremendous change over the course of our tenure, where a lot of decisions have become twos and threes, and threes and fours. There's always going to be that administrator-centered decision, like snow days. Unfortunately, Dr. Robertozzi has that task of making that ultimate decision, and he's right or wrong fifty to fifty percent of the population. However, with our weather watchers, which is one of our success stories, we've been able to get our information, and we've made better decisions for our, our students. So where that was solely a one is now more of a two and a three, and we're even moving into the fours and fives. So again, this all comes with our wonderful work of working together with our faculty.
It's really lovely as a teacher, especially, I don't even want to say that out loud. As a teacher, it's lovely to have a voice. It really is.
So some of our accomplishments, we've been, Shari and I have been at this together as facilitators for two years. These are some of our major accomplishments that we've accomplished at the district level. We're not going to highlight all of them, but there's certain ones on here that are absolutely fantastic. For example, at the high school level, we have cost-free summer school. We've reduced failure rates by twenty percent. And again, that just came up in conversations that we've had with our teachers. What is working? What is our best practice? We've also allowed, or we've, you know, thanks to Mr. Shahada, we allow food on half-days. We're feeding students that never had, you know, food on half-days before. And those are all things that have come up through just having our, our quarterly meetings.
They just started out as ideas, simple. A teacher would come up and say, hey, what if we did this? And we were able to do it. It's, it's really incredible what we've been able to accomplish.
And again, every one of these, that success stories that we have on here benefits our students.
And there really is a lot more at the local levels. There's so much at the local levels that we didn't even list for you.
So there's been a lot of research, and this started out at the, at Rutgers University, and we have now joined hands with not only Rutgers, but the NJEA as well. And what we're finding, or as, as our, our groups and other districts have progressed in this journey, we're finding that collaboration is bringing out better educational outcomes in both language arts and math. We're, we're seeing that districts that do participate in labor management are getting more applicants and are not suffering from the teacher shortage. I'm not saying that we are not short teachers, but we're getting more applicant, applications on a regular basis than some of our colleagues in other districts. So it's just a wonderful thing to share and broadcast out there that we have a partnership and a vested interest in both, not only our students, but our faculty as well.
The teachers that are involved at this at the local level also, they're, knowing that they have a voice, that they could speak to their local admin, and also they can reach the district collaborative with their ideas. It's been a game changer because they actually are feeling heard. And we're really, we've really been trying to spread the word, and this is another reason why we're here, is we really want to spread the word and let everybody know what has been going on and what we're doing.
Which brings us to our next part, is sustaining the collaborative. So we have a great idea, but how do we keep this idea blossoming? How do we get this to flourish? And what we need is everyone's help. You know, we would like to expand our group of forty into, into more. So we would like to branch out and have board representation at our quarterly meetings, sometimes even in our local meetings. I think it's important that you guys see the collaboration, the collaborative efforts that we have between our building administrators, our faculty, our power professionals, and the partnerships and relationships that have fully blossomed. And that's all we have.
Any questions?
I have, Mr. Perez, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Dr. Robert.
I just have no, no questions, but two comments. First, thank you so much, Ms. Marola, Mr. Jaeger, for outlining what our district collaborative looks like. Two comments. Mr. Jaeger mentioned that teachers are more likely to apply to work in a district that is known to be more collaborative. There's another piece of that. We have shown that we are better at retaining those teachers, right? This is not the be-all, end-all, but that is a factor, right? When teachers feel heard, there's a better chance they're going to stay in, in that district. And the second thing is, when we started this work, and we started it when I first got here, six years ago, it has obviously evolved into something much bigger and better than we anticipated. But the goal was, when Lori and I, Lori, Ms. Lalama and I sat down, we said, we want to make sure that we start this work, that we do good things, but that it doesn't end whenever Ms. Lalama leaves, or whenever I leave, or whenever Shari leaves, or Andy leaves. And the goal is to build structures that maintain this beyond the personalities, right? And one thing we are asking of the board is that for next year, we're going to formally request Mr. Perez a board representative to our district collaborative team, which would almost be like a, a committee report where that board member would give a report at the following board meeting about what they saw at the district collaborative. The only requirement would be that these, these meetings are during the day. There's only four a year, so we would need somebody that has a flexible enough schedule that they'd be able to attend four meetings during the year. And I think that, you know, since Ms. Lalama decided to retire on us already, and, you know, and who knows, you know, I, I was out for three months with, with the medical issue this year. We want to make sure that this sustains beyond us, and one way we do that is, is getting the board involved. So thank you, guys, really, very, very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that very enlightening presentation. Okay, we're going to move on to our next presentation of the night, which is by Mr. Shahada. It's our, an update to the budget presentation.
Oh, is he here?
Oh, okay, Mark, we'd like to invite you up. We, we started without you before. Where is he? Oh, come on up.
Good evening, all. Thank you. As I told Mr. Jengaro in the walkway, I do not have anything to report. I believe Mr. Olive was here about a week ago. That kind of, nothing has happened, nothing has changed since then that's noteworthy. Mr. Hamda personally asked me to come just so that I could potentially give my input or see how the budget and the proposal, new proposals to the budget can and will affect the students. So he just wants to get a student's eye view regarding that. That is why I'm here tonight. So I appreciate it, but there is nothing of importance to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Mark, can I ask you a question before you leave? We only have a couple more meetings left before you graduate high school, and just like to know if you could share with us if you have made plans, what, and what your plans are after high school.
Yes, of course. It's a great question, Mr. Robertozzi. So, Dr. Robertozzi, rather.
Please.
Yeah, so some of you may already know, but I don't believe I've told the board specifically. I'm personally going to Rice University in Houston, Texas, to study business. I did receive a full scholarship for four years through Quest Bridge, which, by the way, if anyone in this room is a parent with a, a student going to college in the near future and is low to medium income, Quest Bridge is a great scholarship that you can apply to. It's a full-ride scholarship, so I completely strongly recommend anyone and everyone that is eligible to apply to that. And I will likely be staying down in Houston after I graduate. There's a lot of great opportunities there. There's a lot of energy companies, I've heard. There's great pipelines. And other than that, you know, I haven't really made any other plans, but I haven't gotten too deep into it, but that's, that's about as far as it goes.
That's great news, Mark. Congratulations on a full scholarship.
Thanks.
And I, I know that no university is cheap, but I think Rice University is on the more expensive side, so to get a full ride is outstanding. And just an example of the kind of education that you can earn at Linden High School when you work hard. So congratulations, Mark.
Thank you so much, Mark, for all your time this year and all your input this year, and all the best for your future, future at, at Rice.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with you guys. I know I still have one more meeting, but it's been an absolute pleasure, and I'm very proud to represent Clifton, very proud to be a Clifton High School alum. So thank you very much, Mr. Perez.
Apparently, I said Linden High School. I, I don't, I'm going to go back and look at the, the, the tape.
You said it.
Obviously, that's my hometown where I grew up and graduated from, but I meant Clifton High School.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, I believe, we can move to Mr. Shahada and his update to the budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. As we gather tonight for the final budget presentation, I want to begin by expressing my sincere appreciation for your partnership, your trust, and your shared dedication to the mission we serve. Budget season is never easy, and this year brought more than its fair share of challenges. But through every uncertainty and every difficult situation, one truth has remained clear: the work we do matters, not just in the abstract, but in the daily lives of students, families, and educators across Clifton. This is more than a budget. It is a reflection of who we are and what we stand for. It is a testament to the belief that every child deserves opportunity, every educator deserves support, and every dollar should work toward a more promising and stronger and more equitable school system. I remain humbled by the responsibility of helping steward this district's resources, and I remain proud of what this team has accomplished under these circumstances. and I remain proud of what this team has accomplished under these circumstances. What I present tonight is a plan grounded in our values, driven by need, and shaped by vision. It protects the classroom, uplifts our staff, and strengthens the foundation for tomorrow. Above all, it ensures that even in times of constraint, we lead with purpose and always with the students at the center. Here is the district at a glance. We have 25 facilities, 1,800 employees, and almost, excuse me, and almost 12,000 students, and of those, 3,500 are transported daily with 57 buses and vans in circulation, and over 1,000 student athletes and 160 clubs and activities. This is the budget schedule we follow this year. The preliminary budget was approved on March 13th. It was sent to the paper on April 25th, and the last day to hold a public hearing is May 5th. This is the district's total budget for the '25-'26 year. All in, we are at $302 million. Roughly $270 million will come from the local tax levy and state aid. In addition to the revenue we get from the city and state, we also receive money from the federal government for specific programs. This totals an estimated $23 million. Here is how the revenue for the '25-'26 year will be spent. As you can see, our largest expenditure is salary and benefits, which equates to roughly 80% of our budget. Now, it's no secret that charter school numbers have drastically increased year over year. Here you will see a five-year look back. In the past five years, we have seen a 17% increase in tuition and roughly a 10% increase in enrollment. Now, in collaboration with the Facilities Committee, these are the capital projects that we have slated for the '25-'26 school year. And just to clarify, these projects are not impacted by the proposed tax levy. Currently, we have one debt we are repaying, and it is supposed to end in '25, '45-'46, excuse me. Now, at the direction of the Finance Committee, on this agenda, you will see a proposed 3% increase. And based on the average assessed home in Clifton, this would equate to roughly $12 a month, or $150 per year. This 3% also encompasses our legal amount of 2% and 1% of the new legislation allowing districts to go to their local fair share that was not utilized in past years. But it is extremely important to remember, the 3% increase for the taxpayers is only based on our piece of the pie. It's crucial to highlight that the proposed 3% increase translates to only a 1.1% uptick on our piece of the pie. As of now, we stand at 49%, but this number will decrease when the city and county finalize their budgets. What has happened since March 13th, our preliminary budget hearing? Well, on March 28th, we received an email from the DOE stating that districts who are under their local fair share, such as Clifton, can now raise their taxes to recoup that entire amount without triggering a public vote. Our total amount that we could have recouped was roughly 40%, or $54 million. And I want to be clear, at no point did this board or administration even entertain that thought. On March 31st, we received a press release from the Governor's Office indicating 20 districts that applied for late liquidation of COVID money would have those funds rescinded, leaving those districts on the hook. Clifton was one of those districts, and our amount was $11 million. But it is important to note that New Jersey has entered in a multi-state lawsuit seeking to recoup those funds. And finally, on April 15th, our insurance broker reached out and informed us that our prescription premium increased by an additional $1 million. This is on top of the $4 million increase that I reported to you guys back in March. Currently, our claims-to-premium ratio is 205%. In simple terms, this means the insurance company is spending more than $2 for every $1 collected in premium. Now, each district in the state is placed into a cohort that allows the state to compare district spending. Clifton is in cohort K through 12, 3,500-plus. This means we are compared to other K through 12 districts with a population of 3,500 students or more. There are currently 96 districts in this cohort, and as you can see, Clifton, in almost every category, is in the bottom third in spending. Now, let's take a moment, because I highlighted a few here that I think are really important and noteworthy. Per pupil budget costs: 63 districts spend more than us. Classroom salary and benefits: 60 districts spend more than us. Total administration: 76 districts spend more than us. Administration salaries and benefits: 77 spend more than us. Maintenance: 82 districts spend more than us. Ratio of students to classroom teachers: 45 spend more than us. Ratio of students to educational support personnel: 46 spend more than us. Ratio of students to administrative personnel: 42 spend more than us. And ratio of faculty to administrative personnel: 44 spend more than us. Now, what I find most interesting, and something that I do want to highlight, is that we have seen our below-average spending on these slides, and I think we can all agree that we are below average in our cohort. But out of the 96 districts we are compared to, we are the 12th-largest district in the entire state, not just the 96, all 560-some-odd districts we have in the state. What does this mean? This means that year over year, we have done more with less. We are in the bottom third in spending, but in the top 10% in population. Based on the state's metrics, we should have more teachers, more administrators, and spending more in each category previously shown. Now, if the board proceeds with a 3% increase, we can maintain operations while preserving all programs and services. However, a 2% increase will require a cutting approximately $1.5 million, impacting student programs, essential services, and the stability of our health benefit program. Let's just take a moment. I know I showed you guys these slides last time, but I want everybody just to take a A 1% increase would require $3 million in cuts. Everything mentioned, up to and including staff. Opting for a 0% increase would necessitate cutting roughly $4.5 million, significantly affecting our ability to sustain the current level of operation and student support. Now, every year, I meet with department heads, principals, and supervisors, and discuss their needs for the upcoming school year. This year, understanding the financial constraints we would be under, our central administrative team had to unfortunately deny the addition of these crucial positions. This was not because we wanted to say no. This is because the budget would not allow the inclusion of these positions. I'm just gonna read them out loud so everybody can, we're on the same page. Power professionals, autism teachers, resource room teachers, speech teachers, behaviorists, child study team members, secretaries, preschool disabled teachers, content coaches, bilingual teachers, basic skills instruction teachers, music teachers, media and reading specialists, registration and domicile investigators, and assistant principals. All in, this is about $14.6 million. Now, here you will see some of the districts across the state and how much they are proposing to raise taxes. These uncertain times are not Clifton-specific. Nearly every district in the state is hurting right now. And as we conclude tonight's presentation, I want to thank you again, not only for your time and attention, but for your continued commitment to the children, families, and staff of Clifton Public Schools. This budget is not perfect. No budget ever is. But it is intentional. It reflects difficult choices grounded in fairness, equity, and a steadfast belief in the power of public education to transform lives. We are facing one of the most uncertain fiscal environments in recent memory. But even in the face of rising costs, unfunded mandates, and unpredictable aid, our priorities remain clear: Keep students first, protect the classroom, and support our staff, and act responsibly with taxpayer dollars. The road ahead will require vigilance, flexibility, and collective resolve, but I truly believe that with the leadership of this board and the strength of this community, Clifton will continue to do what it always has done: Rise to the challenge, serve with purpose, and deliver on the promise of public education. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight, guys. I look forward to your questions and discussion.
Okay, open floor to questions. Commissioner Basford.
Thank you, Mr. Shahada, for a very outstanding and very comprehensive deep dive into the information that we all requested. As we know on this board that we have the ability to go to adequacy, if we wanted to, as a board. I'm gonna ask you to please explain what that is to the community, what adequacy would be, and in order to reach adequacy, how much would this board need to raise taxes and the amount with our authority?
Yes, so adequacy is the number that the state derives based on a plethora of facts of what the locality should be paying in conjunction with what the state aid they get. So ours, I believe, is around $197 million is what we would be completely adequate on the local side. Turns out to, I believe, 38.34%, or $54 million.
So, we, technically as a board, if we wanted to get to adequacy, we'd have to raise taxes 30?
8.34%.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Ms. Basford, for the first time ever, the state has given the board the authority to do that, which is...
The community doesn't.
Right.
The community doesn't know that. That's why I wanted to bring it, that we're allowed to go up to 30, 38%. Could you imagine?
No.
I couldn't imagine what we could do with 38%. But I know that the nine people that I serve with, or the eight other people that I serve with, we are fiscally responsible. From your presentation, look what we have done. We have done more with less since the 14 years that I've sat in the seat, because May of 2014 is 14 years ago. We're sitting here, 14 years, and I know what it was like, I think it was like $8,000 a student. Look where we are now, and our children, look at our student representative. And one other thing that I'd like to know, Dr. Robertozzi, before the end of the year, if you, this has nothing to do with the budget, if you could give us a list and a figure of how much our kids have gotten in scholarship, because I think the community needs to know that as well.
Absolutely happy to do that. I do get those figures, and I will share with you, I'll share with the board and the community.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm ready.
Okay. Then we'll move on to committee reports. The first is Facilities Committee. And can we please have Commissioner Brunsack read those minutes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Facilities Committee convened on April 9th, 2025. Those present were myself, Commissioner Basford, Commissioner Siano, President Paris, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shahada, Mr. Capisi, Mr. Oviedo, Mr. Toronto, Mr. Watkins. Referendum update: Carpet at CCMS is complete. PSCNG is going to fix the panel on spring break, and the contractor will be removing the boiler. School 8, new power was installed, new electrical panel was also installed. School 9, we are waiting on PSCNG for power switch over. School 15, during the spring break, ceiling grid in the gym will be removed, and the boiler will be removed. School 2 and 12 awaiting PSCNG to hook up new power. School 13, April 1st, new power is to be connected. B&amp;G Updates at Columbus on Monday, April 14th. Methuselah Flooring will begin refinishing on the stage's wooden floor. Cost was $16,918. Bloomfield Japery will install the flame-proof fire retardant stage curtains and side windows curtains to be completed on approximately April 28th, 2025. High School: Sidewalk outside of the new music suite will be replaced the week of April 21st. Rooftop 7 and 8, that control science room, computer room, TV studio, and control room have been completed and are up and running. In the administrative building, due to the age and upgrade to the district, Hutchins upgraded the HVAC system in the district server room. Cost was $44,630. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Brunsack, I would just like to say that the sidewalk at the high school was repaired.
Thank you.
So that's already done.
Thank you.
I walked on them Tuesday night, and they're wonderful. Any other questions for Commissioner Brunsack? No? Okay, next policy, please, Commissioner Suarez.
Thank you, President Paris. The Policy Committee met on April 16th. Board members present were Commissioner Basford, myself, Vice President Santiago, and Commissioner Mejia. Administration in attendance were Dr. Robertozzi, Mr. Shahada, and Mr. Jengaro. The meeting started at 4:15. We didn't discuss much, there's just one thing on the report. The committee was in favor of the policy verbiage update. All other organizations or persons granted the use of school shall make payment within 30 days of use, and the CBOE has the right to revoke the permit if payment falls outside the 30-day period. The committee was in favor in a first and second reading due to the minor change proposed. The meeting ended at 4:30 PM.
Thank you. Commissioner Suarez, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the minutes from Residency, Security, and Technology. Commissioner Siano, please.
Thank you. The meeting took place on Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, and began at 5:03 PM. In attendance from the administration were Mark Jengaro, Michael Doctor, Megan Zanola, and Eric Mountain. Board of Education members in attendance were Vice President Santiago, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Siano, and Commissioner Suarez. Mr. Doctor explained that 14 non-residents have been identified and removed from the district since the committee's last meeting. He also updated the committee that pre-case seats for next school year are quickly filling up. Once full, a waiting list will be created if additional spots become available. Finally, Mr. Doctor shared information about a company who specializes in recruiting a district's students back to the district from charter, parieocal, and choice schools. It was a broad overview, and additional information needed before further committee discussion. Mr. Mountain updated the committee that all technology items needed for the new middle school have been ordered and are being prepped for installation. He also explained that referendum technology upgrades are almost completed, with just some fine tuning being done. Ms. Zanola explained that the jewel of the month was completed this month with fidelity throughout the district. She also discussed the potential expanded use of our weapons detection system. More discussion will be forthcoming at future committee meetings. Ms. Zanola also discussed potential additional responsibilities for security specialists. More discussion will occur at future meetings. The meeting adjourned at 6:58 PM.
Thank you. Commissioner Siano, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Move on to Finance Minutes. Commissioner Santiago, please.
Thank you, President Paris. Finance Committee was held on April 28th. In attendance were Commissioner Brunsack, Commissioner Canova, President Paris, and myself. Dr. Robertozzi, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shahada, and Mr. Uci were also in attendance. The meeting started at 4 o'clock and ended at 5 PM. First item was budget update. The Finance Committee convened to review and discuss updates in preparation for the upcoming budget presentation. The committee engaged in a thorough and thoughtful discussion taking into account the developments and fiscal considerations that have emerged since the preliminary budget hearing. This included updated increasing operational costs that continue to impact the district's ability to maintain essential programs and services. The committee weighed various options and scenarios with a focus on balancing fiscal responsibility with the district's commitment to delivering high-quality education. After careful deliberation, the Finance Committee is recommending that the board consider a 3% tax levy increase in the proposed final budget. This recommendation reflects the committee's assessment of the district's long-term financial stability, the need to preserve staffing and student programming, and the economic realities facing the community. The committee will formally present this recommendation to the full board today, May 1st, for further discussion and potential adoption.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna move on to the Naming Committee. The Naming Committee met on April 4th, and its purpose was to make a recommendation for our new middle school name, which is at the former Paul VI High School site on Valley Road. The committee was made up of four board members, myself, Commissioner Basford, Commissioner Brunsack, Commissioner Santiago, an administrator each from Christopher Columbus and Woodrow Wilson Middle Schools, two faculty members, one each from Christopher Columbus, one from Woodrow Wilson Middle School, two parents from sending districts that will be sending their students to the new school, and a student from CHS. A number of names were submitted for consideration. Bob Foster, Jen Lucas had three submissions. Bob Foster, Jen Lucas had three submissions, Mark Teigen, Thomas Mullen, John Samra, and also there were two names non-related to people. One was Carring Valley, and, and three recommendations for Maple Valley. Although the Nomination Committee felt the individuals note, that were proposed were noteworthy and exemplary Clifton School and Community members, the committee felt that Maple Valley would be a timeless and Clifton Community-connected name in accordance with the facility, our new, accordance with the facility naming precedence. The Ad hoc Committee, I mentioned who they were, I'm sorry. All applications, meaning policy guidelines, were reviewed and considered according to our policy 7660. Several notable school and community members, which I just mentioned, were nominated. In addition, two names other than individuals, Maple Valley and Carring Valley, were submitted. The committee noted that this facility is a leased facility by the district and would most likely sometime in the future revert to another use. It was also noted that there were no schools named in the district currently that bore the name of a local individual. Only existing facilities within schools currently bear an individual's name. For example, the Shershin Media Center at Clifton High School, the John Greco Auditorium at Christopher Columbus Middle School, the Robert Morgan Bandroom at Clifton High School, Joseph, the Joseph Greco Field at Clifton Stadium, and soon-to-be Coach John Ponti's track at Clifton Stadium. The committee unanimously chose Maple Valley Middle School as it represents the geographic and historical connection to, to the community, and the symbolism of the maple trees' association to strength and endurance, as well as the reflection of a student's journey through the seasons of learning, roots and foundational knowledge, and broad branches of growth representing a student's expanding opportunities and aspirations. The recommendation was respectfully submitted to Dr. Robertozzi, who approved and currently, and later in, on our agenda, the formal resolution will be voted on. Any question? Board members? Okay, thank you. This takes us to the public recognition portion of the meeting. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested to sign the register provided for this purpose and to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the, members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments.
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, so motion to close online. No one's in, in the room, by Commissioner Basford, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Now we'd like to open the floor to anyone here in person who'd like to approach our table and make their comments. You have five minutes.
Here we go. Good evening to all. My name's Lori LaLama, and I'm the president of the best union here in the state of New Jersey, Clifton, EA. I was very happy to read tonight's agenda that the Finance Committee wrote a resolution for 3%. However, I would like to make an, another percentage up. Since this is my last budget discussion, I'm going to advocate for and speak in support of a necessary response for 4%. I'm going to up the ante a little. This is an important increase to our school budget, an investment that will move us closer to meeting the educational needs of every student in this district. To understand this increase is essential. We first must understand the concept, and Mr. Shahada, thank you very much for your definition. The concept of adequacy is defined by the state of New Jersey under the School Funding Reform Act, SFRA. Each district is given an adequacy budget, which represents the state's estimate of what it costs to provide a thorough and efficient education, which is a constitutional right for every child in the state of New Jersey. This adequacy value isn't a guess. It's a calculated figure based on real, measurable factors, a base-per-pupil amount, student needs such as economic disadvantage, English language learners, special ed, grade level weights, and even regional cost of living adjustments. The state then calculates what local taxpayers should reasonably be expected to contribute, known as the local fair share, and the difference is ideally made up through state aid. But here's the challenge. In 2023, a report by the New Jersey Policy Perspective found that Clifton's funding was below adequacy by about $2,275 per student. That's a significant shortfall when you multiply it across the thousands of students in our district. The same report attributes this gap to two main causes. The state not fully funding its own formula, and the formula itself not being adequate to reflect today's educational realities. So if we multiply the $2,275 by 11,000 students, it's only a merely $25 million, rounded down a little. Dr. Robertozzi, at the previous meeting, highlighted that Clifton has historically contributed less in local school taxes than many neighboring districts. At the same time, May 2024, Clifton Times article reported that Clifton spends less per student than 70% of the districts in New Jersey. We were not being efficient when we were still underfunded for our students. A 4% increase isn't about luxury. It's about adequacy. It's about moving closer to the baseline of what our students should be getting. It will help us close funding gaps, support essential services, and retain high-quality educators, provide students with the resources they need to succeed, academically, socially, and emotionally. I truly thank you for the 3%, but the state has given us a possibility to increase this number. I'm not going for the 30, 30% or 4%. 4% I'll be happy with. So I urge you to view the proposed increase not as a burden, but as a step toward educational equity and responsibility. Let's make sure Clifton students get the education they not only need, but deserve. And in addition, so everybody's getting named. We have Maple Valley for the middle school. How about Lori LaLama Elevator? When is that coming? I don't want to see Otis written on that elevator. It's going to be Lori, L-O-R-I, LaLama. So I'm just saying. Hopefully it's done before... I will go to PSCNG personally and make sure there is. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Welcome, come on up.
Hi, my name's Virginia Sheenmicky, known to miss S. to the kids I teach at School 11. I'm here with my mother, and both of us are Clifton residents with no children in the public school system. Actually, everyone in my family attended Catholic school. Everyone except my brother Jay, who was diagnosed with autism when he was four. Jay's Clifton school career was challenging, as back then, communication and impulse control were hard for him. The Clifton Special Education Department partnered with my mom and helped give him the things he desperately needed, like smaller classes with modified curriculums, a one-to-one para-professional, and the tools to transition from school to the working world. Jay graduated in 2008, and we are so grateful for all the opportunities Clifton gave him, many of which may not have been available at every other public school. That said, it wasn't all perfect. And when I became a special education teacher, I wanted to build on that foundation of respect and compassion that Clifton had shown my family and do even better. As it turns out, so did Clifton. In my blessed and lucky 13 years working in the same district that educated my brother, I have found a culture of collaboration and growth. I have been trained in programs such as Nurtured Heart, which builds students' inner resilience while redirecting their intensity in positive ways as they learn to manage their emotions and increase their self-regulation. I use the second-step social-emotional learning curriculum, which teaches my young students to recognize their feelings, develop empathy for each other, and give age-appropriate coping mechanisms for handing, handling difficult emotions. I find myself often saying, "If only my brother had this." The good going on in our own backyard does not stop there. I am a proud member of our PBIS team, of which School 11 is the district model, and we have data-based evidence of growth from our efforts with plans to improve. Our media specialists provide our students not only with wonderful books, but literacy-based lessons and makerspace opportunities that help students develop real-world skills such as problem-solving, collaboration, and creativity. Through hard work and commitment, our Clifton Cheer Team has won three consecutive state championships while demonstrating athleticism, enthusiasm, and teamwork. Our Mustang Band is award-winning, and video of their performance, coupled with a science lesson on sound, made even our most distractible students interested. We're, we've even served as a model for other school districts, both through School 11's PBIS Rare Day Celebration and our district-level collaborative team, which have been highlighted as examples of effective practice. So it's no wonder we were named number 12 on 100 Best Places to Live, and that our schools were number three on that list. Our world is changing. It's not the same place it was just a short time ago. Just as there were glows and grows from when my brother was in the district, we need to recognize both our good and strive to do better. We need growth, not stasis, and definitely not cutbacks. We need the 4%. As a property owner and taxpayer, I do not say this lightly. But our One Clifton children deserve to be prepared to thrive in the world we're handing them. They're going to be us one day. The people that bag our groceries, fix our pipes, teach our children, perform lifesaving medical procedures, and also take care of us when we're in retirement homes. Do right by them. Thank you for your time and your hard work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Shahada for his presentation. I do have a couple of questions before I'd like to say something. So first of all, I wanted to ask what the transportation hub expense was, that $535,000 expense?
Normally, we don't do question and answer, but go ahead. We'll make an exception since it's budget week. Go ahead.
So that transportation hub, that is money that we allocated from capital reserve from last budget to this budget. So we purchased a property right next to our current transportation hub, 94 Sylvan Ave. We are, we are closing on the building actually Tuesday in that back room. So the money we need is, because it's not going to be done officially through all the lawyers and all that legalese stuff, so the money's going to go past July, or rather, June 30th. So we have to re-pull it back out, because that money reverts back to our account after June 30th.
Okay, I understand. My second question was regarding the adequacy. How do we know how long the board will have this power to raise the taxes? Is it only for this year, or will that extend over the course of the next couple of years?
I'll answer that. It's only for this year, right now. They may choose to redo it in the future, but right now, it's just a one-shot opportunity.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Paris. And I think that just kind of adds to the urgency, and I'd like to thank Ms. Lori LaMama for bringing it up. But I'd like to give my view as a student of the proposed budget increase, and I would like to advocate for the 4% increase. I'd like to take a look at some of the stats Mr. Shahada presented. Other districts are increasing their taxes 4%, 8%, 30%, we even saw. Our neighboring District Pesake, I believe they increased it by 4% or whereabouts. I think it would be a completely warranted increase. And I'd like to implore you all to take a, a look into some of the successes we've had in investing in our students. I believe it is an utmost concern to invest in our students. I'd like to bring up Chewy. Chewy and the service dog teams were a very recent investment into our student body. And as Dr. Robertozzi, as Mr. Jengaro will tell you, it has been a tremendous success in improving the quality of life of our students. And it is, it's really important to, to make sure that students get all the resources they deserve. It helps to build a community within the high school, and taking away clubs or grants will break down what is already a struggling community within the high school. And some of the proposed cuts for the 1% or 0% or 2% are, are quite frankly outrageous to me. I would hate to see clubs get defunded, sports get defunded. And it, it's, I just, I would like to say that I firmly and strongly stand with the 4% increase. And if not from a teacher, if not from an educator, if not from a parent, I would like you to hear it from a student. I believe that it is necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Motion to close.
A motion to close by Commissioner Mejia.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Next is adoption of minutes. We're going to, I'm going to bundle these two items together, the minutes of April 8th and April 10th, so I'm looking for a motion to approve both.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mejia. Roll call, Mr. Shah.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Dr. Robertozzi, your report time.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the One Clifton Community. Very brief tonight, because we did have two presentations. I just want to publicly once again thank Ms. Marola, Mr. Jaeger, for the outstanding presentation on our district labor management collaborative. It has, I believe, transformed our district in many ways, and quite frankly, we're only scratching the surface of how good it can be. And second, a big thank you to Mr. Shahada for that outstanding presentation tonight. It was, he took what was very, is very difficult material to understand. He made it clear, he made it concise, and he made it authentic to, to our lives. So, Mr. Shahada, outstanding job with the presentation tonight. You've done all you can do. Administration's done all we can do to express, you know, what we believe is necessary. And ultimately, Board of Education members will, will vote, and will make a decision that they believe is right. And we absolutely respect that decision, whatever that decision is. So that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Paris. Thank you very much.
Yes. I don't have the numbers. Could you share? You want Mr. Shahada to share something?
Yeah, Mr. Shahada, could you share? We discussed at our last board meeting the meals that we fed students.
the meals that we fed students over spring break. And I was supposed to put it in my report, and I didn't. So I know Mr. Shahada knows the numbers. And I will say this, it was much more successful than we ever dreamed it would be. So, Mr. Shahada, please.
So for that week of spring break when we were piloting the lunch program at school 17, and I believe Christopher Columbus, 1,400 meals were distributed to students in our district, and 238 were sent to the Code Blue Warming Center for the unhoused population. So I just want to thank the board for being on board with this. You guys are changing lives, and we sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Shahada. I'll reserve my comments for the end, as I usually do. Any unfinished business? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to education and administration. We have a lot of special recognitions this month. So we're gonna start with, May 5th is Teacher Appreciation Week. Commissioner Brunsack, please read that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Board of Education proclaims May 5th, 2025, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Clifton Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack. Next is, May 7th is National School Nurse Day. Commissioner Suarez, could you please read that?
Yes, thank you, President Paris. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 120 years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors such as social determinants that impact students' health. And whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving, and in improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams such as school health services, 504 and IEP plans, disaster emergency planning, providing care coordination to address the school population. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be it resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts to meet the needs of today's students by providing and advocating for quality, student-centered care and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by supporting students to stay healthy, in school, safe, and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but in every opportunity throughout the year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Board of Education encourages all district students and staff to observe Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, as School Nurse Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez. Special Education Week starts on May 11th through 17th. Commissioner Bassford, could you please read that?
Thank you, President Paris. My pleasure. Special Education Week, May 11th through May 17th, 2025. Resolved that the Clifton Board of Education accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to recognize Special Education Week in New Jersey from May 11th to the 17th, 2025. Whereas the New Jersey, New Jersey School Boards Association theme for this week is planting the seed of education. Whereas we would like to take the opportunity to recognize the achievement of our state's 232,000 students with special needs and the dedicated collaborative work of their teachers, school personnel, parents, and other professionals. Whereas our many teachers, child study teams, power professionals, administrators, school personnel, transportation staff, and the Board of Education provide ongoing support and assistance to our students. Resolved, we in Clifton and the most fortunate, are most fortunate to have such amazing staff to help our students with special needs reach their potential and become successful citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bastard. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. Commissioner Siano, could you please read that proclamation?
Absolutely, thank you so much. Whereas May marks Mental Health Awareness Month, a time dedicated to addressing the struggles experienced by millions of Americans dealing with mental health conditions. Whereas, since its establishment in 1949, Mental Health Awareness Month has played a crucial role in combating stigma, providing support, spreading public awareness, and pushing for policies that prioritize the welfare of those affected by mental illness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Board of Education recognizes the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Siano. May is also Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders Month. Whereas the people of the United States join together each May to pay tribute to the contributions of generations of the Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders who have enriched the history of this nation. And whereas the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects. And whereas it is imperative for the good of our nation that schools continue to build awareness and understanding of the contributions made by Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas celebrating Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month provide the students and school community an opportunity to recognize the achievements, contributions, and history of, and to understand the challenges faced by Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas the Clifton Board of Education, through its core values and implementation of culturally responsive practices, demonstrate our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion within our school district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Board of Education officially recognizes the month of May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. May is also Jewish-American Heritage Month. Commissioner Santiago, please read that proclamation.
Thank you, President Paris. May is Jewish-American Heritage Month, established by the United States Congress to recognize a more than 360-year history of Jewish contributions to American culture. Whereas Jewish-Americans, in the face of unspeakable discrimination and adversity, have fought tirelessly, sorry, to realize the promise of the nation's freedom and continue to teach us empathy and compassion inspired by their parents and grandparents. And whereas Jewish-Americans have helped bring about enduring progress in every aspect of society, shaping our country's character and embodying the values we hold dear. And whereas Jewish communities continue to confront hostility and bigotry. And whereas determined to confront racism, many Jewish-Americans found a cause in the civil rights movement in a call for freedom and justice. And whereas we recognize the history of Jewish contributions to American culture, which acknowledges the achievements of American Jews in the fields ranging from sports and arts and entertainment to medicine, business, science, government, and military service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton School District Board of Education affirms May as Jewish-American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago.
My pleasure.
It's my honor to read the naming of newly acquired third middle school as Maple Valley Middle School Proclamation. Whereas the Clifton Board of Education has recently acquired a facility to serve as the district's third middle school. And whereas the Board established an ad hoc naming committee composed of stakeholders to review potential names for the new school facility in accordance with Clifton Board of Education Policy 7660, Naming of School Facilities. And whereas the ad hoc naming committee conducted its work with transparency and community input, ultimately recommending the name Maple Valley Middle School. And whereas the naming process adhered to all technical specifications, requirements, and procedural guidelines as set forth in Policy 7660, now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Board of Education hereby approves the name Maple Valley Middle School for the district's newly acquired third middle school facility. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent and District Administration are authorized to take all necessary actions to implement this resolution, including, but not limited to, updating all relevant records, signage, and public communications. In addition, we have a resolution to adopt a revised school attendance zoning plan. Whereas the Clifton Board of Education is committed to ensuring equitable access to high-quality educational opportunities for all students and to responsibly, and to responsible planning for future enrollment trends and facility usage. And whereas Statistical Forecasting LLC was retained by the Clifton Public Schools to conduct a comprehensive demographic study projecting grade-by-grade enrollments from the 2025 through 2025-26 through 2029-30 school years. And whereas Statistical Forecasting completed a thorough review and analysis of multiple data sets and trends, including community population trends, age structure, demographic characteristics, historical enrollment patterns district-wide by grade level and by individual school, trends related to race and poverty status, historical birth counts and fertility rates by attendance area, student yields by housing types, including 1-4 family homes, townhomes, condominiums, apartments, the impact of new housing developments, current and projected school-building capacities, student residential patterns based on geocoded address data from the 2019, 2020, and 2024, 2025 school years, and revision of middle school attendance boundaries to accommodate the opening of a new middle school. And whereas the purpose of the study was to ensure balanced enrollment, efficient use of district facilities, and thoughtful planning in light of community growth and the opening of the new middle school. And whereas the Board has reviewed the findings of the demographic study and the proposed revisions to the school attendance zones and sending schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Clifton Board of Education hereby formally adopts the revised school attendance zones and sending school designations as outlined in the demographic study conducted by Statistical Forecasting LLC, effective beginning with the 2025-2026 school year. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent and Administration are authorized to take all necessary steps to implement the revised boundaries and to communicate the changes to students, families, and staff in a timely and transparent manner. Right. The rest of these, I'm sure everybody's reviewed. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve under Education, items number 1 through 12.
President Paris, I would like to do a, suspend, make a motion to suspend our bylaw 0131 for EA9, just for this vote, and then to reinstate the policy 0131, our bylaw, to have this first and second reading. That's my motion.
Oh, okay, so this would be considered first, second reading. Anyone second that?
Second.
Okay. Motion to combine first and second reading for Policy 7510, proposed by Commissioner Bassford, seconded by, yes, Commissioner Brunsack?
Do we do a separate roll call for this line, or no? Or not?
No, we're just modifying this particular.
No, no, it is already first and second reading on the agenda. Ms. Bassford is just suspending the policy.
Because we're supposed to have two separate meetings.
Yeah.
So yes, we should do a separate vote on that.
So the vote would be yes to agree to suspending the policy.
Okay, yes. Separate vote just to suspend the policy?
So that we can, so that we can vote first and second reading?
My motion was to suspend the bylaw 0131 just for EA9 for this meeting and to reinstate it right away so that future bylaw amendments will go the right way with two meetings.
Suspend it for this meeting and this vote, reinstate it immediately following. Roll call, anyone? Discussion? Any questions? Okay, roll call, Mr. Shah.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Shahada. I should have abstained from B Education, item number 10, please.
President Paris, we haven't gotten to the formal vote for all of them. This was just suspended.
Okay, okay. I thought we were doing the whole group at this point.
No, just because you had to do the suspension of the bylaw first.
Okay.
Now you can do the whole group.
Okay, now we're voting on the whole group. I'm sorry. So a motion to approve items 1 through 12 under, I'm sorry, yeah, under B Education Administration.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Danny, seconded by Commissioner Mejia. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Shah.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes to all, abstaining on my name only on E10.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes to everything except EA9? No, on EA9.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes, abstain on EA10.
President Paris?
Yes, abstain on B10.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Personnel. I'm looking for a motion to approve items 1 through 30.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Brunsack, seconded by Commissioner Suarez. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Shah.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, I'm abstaining on P23. That's an abstention on that. That's handled with care. I don't like the program because of adversives. It's a whole, you know how I feel about that, Danny. And I'm abstaining on my name only on P27.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsack?
Yes, abstain on P27, my name only.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes, abstaining on P27, my name only.
Ms. Siano?
Yes, abstaining on my name only, P27.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes, abstaining on P27, my name only, and P28.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes, abstain on P28, P29.
President Paris?
Yes, abstain, my name only, 27, and also on 28.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, our next group is Finance and Facilities. Looking for a motion to approve items 1 through 16.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Brunsack. Second.
I want to make a motion to have F7 as a separate vote. That's the budget.
Second.
Okay, so we'll remove item 7 for a separate vote and discussion. So the motion has been, second, anybody second that? Commissioner Mejia seconded. Commissioner Bassford made the motion. We will now be voting on items 1 through 16. We will now be voting on items one through 16 excluding items seven for follow-up.
We need a vote on pulling P7.
Oh, okay, we'll vote on, okay, they asked, we need to vote first, I'm pulling P7 for a separate vote.
All right, so there's just a vote to vote on it separately, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have discussion, vote on it separately, it's a budget. Okay, take a quick roll call on that.
Ms. Basford?
Yes, to have a separate vote on P7.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes, for a separate vote.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes, and thank you Commissioner Basford, because I was pausing before because I also wanted to do that, wasn't sure what the protocol was, so thank you.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so could we, we're going to vote on the rest of them at this point. So a motion to approve one through 16, accepting item seven for now.
Motion to move the group except for seven.
Commissioned by Basford, seconded by Commissioner Dr. Danny. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Shahada.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes, I'm abstaining on F3 because my company made a donation, and F16, check 222038.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes, abstain on 15, item 5431.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shahada.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to item seven. So do we want to discuss first or make a motion first before we start discussion?
Motion to move seven.
Motion to move seven by Commissioner Basford.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brunsack, discussion. Commissioner Suarez.
As a group, I guess, is this the time to bring up the potential, I'm even going to propose like going up, doing the 4% as CEA suggests, is this the time to discuss that? Because this is the once and on, potentially once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take advantage of the higher tax rate, so I just wanted to bring that up as an option.
Is part of the discussion, you can do as a separate motion? And add, you could.
Yeah, you can just modify the F7 that Ms. Basford did and make it four, five, six, 22.
Okay, so you would need, so your motion would be to?
I guess, I want the discussion, right? Because I'm not going to make a motion for a specific percentage without input from my colleagues, so I guess, I think the discussion.
This would be the time to discuss.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
So would you like the floor?
Well, I just, I, sure, I'll have the floor. You know, I think it's worth entertaining a 4% increase just because this is the opportunity to do so. We're talking about future generations here, not just next year, but the impact that it can have going forward. I appreciate every educator, student, community member that has spoken about this for weeks past and until today, and I hear them and I really understand their needs and concerns. And just currently, right now, public education is in jeopardy, and if we can have a safe space to say we have an opportunity to increase money for our district right now, I think it's worth taking advantage of. And I would just love, that's my opinion, so I just wanted to share that with my colleagues and bring that up for discussion.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Mejia.
Are you going to motion it? Bring it up for a motion?
Um, not until.
Okay. I did have one more question. Basically, when I was driving here, I was listening to the presentation, the 3% is basically just to get us by, correct? Nothing else, basically added on except for what you mentioned before.
Correct, that is with the increase in the prescription that I informed you guys about on the 15th.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Dr. Danny?
But we did know about the prescription increase in the last meeting.
We knew there was an increase of about $4 million at the March 13 preliminary hearing. I got another email on the 15th of April, so two weeks ago, that it increased an additional $1 million because we were running really, really bad. It got worse, rather, so they revised their renewal to us, and it was an increase of $1
Any other discussion? Yes, Commissioner Basford?
Okay, so I wrote something because it's been a rough week in my house. So in order to get to adequacy, you told us it was 38%, okay? For those that are supporting an increase 2%, 0, I mean, 0, 1, 2, 3, or 4, I sincerely hope that you are organizing fundraises that are needed to preserve the services for our children and staff that they deserve, because whether we support this increase or not, each of us took an oath to be responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollars. I am not here to assign blame, but I am making observations based on repeated discussions we've had on this day this year for this budget. For clarity, I just want to say that it has been repeatedly said that past boards are to blame for not raising the tax levy. Let me be clear, you cannot sit here and point to that sole reason we're in this situation. That board, like the current negotiating committee, made decisions based on information and assurances provided at the time. We have always been fiscally responsible with our budgets here in Clifton, making decisions carefully and thoughtfully based on the information we were given. The decision not to raise taxes, the tax levy in the previous year was not made in a vacuum, it was made with deliberate consideration with guidance, just as you made decisions to, the negotiating committee, to approve approximately 4% raises for various bargaining units in the last year. So to the negotiation committee, I ask this question directly. Were you given solid assurances that the district could sustain those raises through state and federal aid as well as the tax levy? Did you receive accurate, credible information that supported your recommendation to this board? Now in 2025, we are faced with a financial bind due to many factors, well beyond our control. But before we continue to blame the past boards and before I want to blame any committee for what has been given some of inexperienced decisions and over generous decision, let's pause. Let's stop focusing on blame, let's be clear-eyed about what we look ahead and what we can give and what we have to cut. Let's remember, before we ask our students to pay, to participate in extracurriculars, often the very things that keep them engaged in schools, often the very thing that saves their lives in school, often the very thing that they make them motivated to go to school. We must exhaust every other option. It's time to work together, take this opportunity to move the district forward and not blame anyone. Blame will not fix the problem. As the author Douglas Adams once wrote, "It is a mistake to think that you can solve any major problem just with blame." So I make a motion for 3%.
That is already a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on 4%.
Can I make a motion for 4%?
So it would be a motion to modify, modify that motion to change 3 to 4%.
Right.
Forgive me, guys, the resolution actually says 3%.
Okay, so my motion is to move seven at 3%. Sorry.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Suarez wants to modify F7 to 4%.
Okay.
So it'll be first, I got my rubber rules chart out.
You got your book?
I got my rubber rules chart out. So the motion would be a motion to modify the motion to say from 3 to 4%. You're just voting on the modification, not whether you're passing the motion, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So you need a second.
She needs a second.
I need a second. So I motion to modify the 3% to 4%. And so what we're voting on is for this motion, correct?
I'll second it.
Just for the motion.
Is there a second?
Not for passage of the fourth.
Seconded by Commissioner Mejia. Okay, any more discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
If the modification passes, then we vote on the 4% the next round. If the modification fails and we don't raise it, does it stay with 3% that's on the, then we, if that fails, then it goes back to the 2% that we sent to the round?
No, it goes back to the 3% that's on this agenda.
Okay, thank you.
That is the superseding, that is our baseline for the time being.
Thank you, I just want to be clear what I'm voting on.
Okay, any other questions?
Roll call?
Okay, roll call.
Oh, good. Ms. Basford?
I'm okay with three, my water bill's going up 5%. We don't know what the county's doing, we don't know what the city's doing, so I vote no on four.
Mr. Brunsack?
No.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
No.
Mr. Mejia?
No.
Mr. Siano?
No, for.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
No.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion does not carry.
Okay, now we would revert to item seven, the original motion to adopt the final budget with modifications, which would be a 3% increase year-over-year.
Motion to move it.
Motion moved by Commissioner Basford.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mejia, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Ms., oh, Dr. Danny?
Yes. I just, you know, just keeping taxpayers in mind and everything that, you know, again, we had the second meeting, and I know things happen, and I feel like, you know, things will happen again, and so with my conscience and everything, I just have to say, I just wanted to put there that I have to go with 2%.
Okay, we're voting right now on three.
No, I know, but I just wanted that, you know, out there.
Okay, roll call.
Quick, another question. Just want to make 100% clear, 3% is just to make sure we get by, correct?
Correct.
Just to get by.
Just to get by, like Talal Qali said, just to get by.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Basford?
3% is that we just lay flat with stable water, correct?
Just to make it to another, just to make it to July 1st.
Right, with no razzle-dazzle in the future. I vote yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
No.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
No.
Mr. Mejia?
You know, last time we voted, I had trouble just voting in general whether it was going to be two, and I was willing to go down to one. But then having these new explanations told to us, if we were to go down to two, these are all the things we'd be cutting. Can I read the list? Assemblies, field trips, robotics, athletic surprise, supplies, stipends, from CHS, CCMS, project graduation, academic awards, summer enrichment, Wildra Wilson stipends, CHS club activities dues, the band, the band.
The band.
Care of grounds, health equipment, security specialists, security specialists that we voted for two years ago to make sure our schools are being safe. And now we need 3% just to have all that. 2% would have helped us, you know, before, but now we need the 3%. And I know before I didn't want to vote, but today I'm voting yes for the 3%.
Ms. Siano?
No.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes, and, you know, I just, you know, I'm sorry that, for everyone who wanted a 4%, because in doing 3%, we're turning down paras, teachers for artistic students, resource room teachers, speech teachers, behaviors, child study team, bilingual teachers, and the list goes on. So I apologize to the Clifton community that we are unable to have those things, but I am a yes for 3%.
Vice President Santiago?
So Commissioner Suarez, I appreciate your motion. We have the prescription benefit usage that went up. If you look it up, there's a lot of districts that are facing that same prescription benefit increase, many, many, many districts. Look, the truth is, 4% might not be enough. We have on the record, the federal government, who, all of our title funding may be going away, they named Clifton specifically with the COVID funds, this is 20, 30 million dollars. So, yeah, I mean, we have to prepare in case of that worst-case scenario, and there's lawsuits, but who knows what that outcome is. But I'm yes on three, thank you.
President Paris?
Some meetings ago, we had a member of the public speak and really suggested we look at the definition, at least our definition, of thorough and efficient education. That definition, unfortunately, when it comes to monetary point of view, is determined by the state of New Jersey. They determine what we should be allocating for allowance for each student, and they determine how much the taxpayer figures into that equation. To Commissioner Basford's point, it's no one's fault on any previous board that this situation exists. Every board member has voted and supported what was in the best interest of this district. But the fact remains that Clifton, by our own state's definition, is probably the poster child for efficiency. There are 70% of the districts, not even, never mind in our class, that spend more per pupil than us. And within our own class, we're still in the lower third of spending. So we certainly are an efficient organization. The 3% helps us maintain the thorough, I'm knocking on wood, for the, at a bare minimum. So absolutely yes on the 3%.
Thank you, President Paris, motion carries. I would like to say on behalf of central administration, the students, the staff, we thank you guys, we know this is not an easy decision, but you guys are making a difference in the students' lives. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to board number comments, I believe. So if I remember who we start with, I believe it's Dr. Danny this week.
So, just one thing, today I was getting some legislative updates. Oh, sorry, today I was getting legislative updates, and there is, there is a case in the Supreme Court which would, obviously, if it passes, it would decide whether funding could go to religious charter schools. Because it's, I don't know if you know about that, but it's Saint Isidore of Seville Catholic Virtual School in Oklahoma. And then therefore, if that did actually pass in the Supreme Court, then religious schools could get, religious public charter schools could get public school funding, just an aside there. Other things, say, Happy Teacher Appreciation Day, thank you to all the teachers for all you do, to the school nurses, thank you for all you do. Mark, the student representative, I want to say congratulations on your scholarship, and I'm sure that you will do great things. Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers out there, and happy birthday, because today's actually my dad's birthday, to the man who make me, who helped to make me the person that I am today. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Danny. Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. I just want to mention one thing really quickly, I was talking to a few parents this past week about our upcoming special awards meeting in June, they're mentioning that a lot of, that day is going to be like the Say County Senior Awards Dinner, and that a lot of the people who are going to get honored that day wouldn't even be able to make it to our special meeting, and they, actually, they want to be there. So is there any way we could possibly change that date to another date?
We can look into it for sure.
Okay, all right, thank you, because I would really enjoy, for those case who are also getting honored to be there as well. I want to give a huge congratulations to our flag football team, they're doing really great this, this spring, as well as our lacrosse team and our track team, which always does great. In terms of that, I know a lot of students today, they're committing for their, their next journey, whether it's community college, trade school, the arts, or whether it's just going to college in general, a huge shout-out to all of them. I know I had a couple of students from CHS who visited St. Peter's University this past week, gave them a quick tour, tell them, hey, this is one of the, I like to, you know, tell them, hey, this is a really good school, I like to give them opportunities. With that said, I know this past budget vote, it was definitely hard for me. But that same day from, I think I probably talked to over, I don't know why, a lot of people like to stop me and talk to me. And I probably get a lot of people, and sometimes I do get harassed, unfortunately, I do, so I probably talked to over like maybe 100. Unfortunately, I do. So I probably talked to over like maybe a hundred people telling me, no, like, you can't do this, you can't do that. We can't fire this many people. We don't want to lose all these cool things. And it did open up my mind. I know we did have conversation also about everything in terms of the political environment, the economics of it. And just today when you were mentioning the new budget proposal, a 3% was needed in order to just meet the bare minimum of things. It's never easy raising these types of taxes. But like, um, Commissioner Basford mentioned in the beginning, we all took the oath to give the best education to our students. And I know even though it is not the most popular thing, I know we're, you know, fully giving our students the best chance of not just surviving, but making it by and achieving great things, whether it's in high school, two years, three years, four years. I'm trying, I'm, I'm almost about to get emotional because I do see the way this affects our students in the long run. So hopefully, you know, in 10, 15 years, we have a great student out of CHS that becomes probably, you know, a Senator, President even. So thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Commissioner Ciano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by extending a heartfelt thank you to the speakers tonight. Mark, best of luck to you and your future. I see only greatness coming your way. Uh, I want to take a moment to celebrate two outstanding leaders that we have. Congratulations to our district superintendent, Danny Robert Tozzi, on receiving, I'm just going to do the abbreviation here, the NJTESOL slash NJBE Superintendent of the Year Award. That's like the whole alphabet. This remarkable recognition highlights not only your leadership, but also the incredible work being done across our district to promote and celebrate student success. So that's awesome. Uh, similarly, congratulations to Commissioner Basford for being nominated for the NJSBA president. Judy, I couldn't think of anyone better suited for this role. We have our ups and downs, so we don't always see eye to eye, but you know, your guidance and your friendship have gotten me this far. You are truly deserving of this honor and so much more. Uh, I want to reflect on the success of the Spring Break Food Initiative. Mr. Shahada, amazing idea. I'm still backing you on that no matter how far you go with it. Supporting those in need is an essential focus for our community. Thanks to this initiative, I think our numbers are a little off. I have 1,394 lunches were provided and 239 meals were generously donated to the Health Department to support the unhoused. This effort reminds us of the power of coming together to help, help those across our community. Tony, congratulations on your son's wedding tomorrow. That's awesome. Many blessings for an amazing marriage. Maybe the Reverend over here will give you a blessing later on. Mother's Day, obviously, I don't know where I would be without my mother, you know, between, you know, my teacher, Mr. Farrell, who's retiring and my mother, you know, God knows where I would be today. I don't think I'd be sitting here. I don't, I don't think I'd be breathing, to be honest with you. It was a rough time for me and she stood by me no matter how awful I was. I'm glad I turned into who I am now. Just speaking of the Spring Break Food Initiative, don't think that I turned down or I voted no on the tax lightly. The Spring Break Food Initiative, those are the people that are going to be impacted by the tax increase. The tax increase isn't easy for everybody. It's not just us. It's the city, it's the county, it's the gas tax that was just passed. It's the sewer tax. It's everything that's going up and I see it more than anybody. So maybe that's why I have such a hard time with it. I see how it's affecting families. I see how it's affecting people in our community. I see all the nonprofits that I work with, the people struggling every day where every dollar matters. That's why it was hard for me to go up that much, because to many people, hey, it's an extra $100, $150 a year, who cares? That could make or break somebody and that's the honest truth. Uh, I want to let everybody know that I'm not going to be present for the next meeting, uh, but I am going to attend via Zoom, so if we can fix that volume, so I'm not shouting at you guys, that would be amazing. Uh, thank you all for your time tonight. Obviously, we're all dedicated to what we do. Thank you all for everything, uh, as we support each other as members of this wonderful community. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ciano. Commissioner Suarez?
Thank you, President Paris. Uh, good evening, everyone. I too, I'm really happy to be a part of the district that served a total of 1,394 meals. My numbers are of the emails as well, Joe, so I get it. During spring break, I think for us to be able to support our students in such a meaningful way is to be a part of a district that truly cares. It is an incredible way to demonstrate that we are in fact one Clifton and I'm really grateful that we were able to do such a wonderful thing. As for the budget, I want to truly thank my colleagues who voted for the 3% budget tonight. I feel a sense of ease and relief knowing that our students and staff will receive what they deserve and need to maintain the strong public education we have here in Clifton. I also thank all the educators and students who came in support of the budget. Your voice has strongly influenced, informed our understanding of the financial needs of our district budget and your input is greatly appreciated. While I am sorry that we did not get the 4% that was suggested by the people who are in front of the students every single day and that we cannot get the necessary resources for our special education department and school administration teams, I am at least appreciative of the fact that we can service our students well enough for the upcoming school year. And I also want to include, um, I really appreciate our ability to disagree politely and respectfully. I think that's a really important, um, part of our democracy and I think we are a really good example of that. So while I proposed the 4%, it's part of the process and I respect my colleagues' opinions here and their ability to do so. So I just want the community to understand that we work together in a way that's respectful and understanding our disagreements. And that's all I have to say about that. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Basford?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Joe. It's only a nomination, but it's, uh, kind of came as a little bit of a shock. Thank you to the district for feeding those who have less than all of us. Your care for doing this, um, meant a lot to the volunteers. They were thrilled and they were just happy that they could actually extend that to people that were very needy. So thank you very much. Want to, um, thank everyone that came out to speak at the podium tonight. Um, we hear you. Your voices matter to us. And I'm glad to see that we have more and more engagement in the audience than in the past. To all the teachers, uh, happy appreciation to you. We appreciate you. To our, um, the nurses, we appreciate you. To our special education staff, um, during special education week and every week. Thank you. Thank you for all you do, your voices, your service and your heart. To our superintendent, congratulations on being, um, named Superintendent of the Year. Now we have to work on that county one. We have to get you nominated. This recognition is not only well deserved, it's a testament to your tireless commitment to the educational excellent, educational excellence, student achievement and the well-being of every child, teacher and staff member in our district, Danny. Congratulations. You make us so proud. To the moms out there, to every mom in our school district, highlighting the HSA moms, we see you, we thank you, we celebrate you. May this Mother's Day bring you the love and appreciation you so desperately deserve. And to those whom, uh, Mother's Day is difficult, may you find peace and comfort and healing, but happy Mother's Day to all. Thank you. God bless. See you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Basford. Commissioner Brunsack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to congratulate my wonderful colleague, Commissioner Basford, on her nomination for president for Passaic County School Boards Association. Commissioner Basford, you will have earned this. It's going to be so easy. It's going to be like taking candy from a baby, so. Little pre-congratulations over there. Next, I want to congratulate our own Dr. Robert Tozzi, receiving the NJBE Superintendent of the Year Award. Uh, it's based upon outstanding work that all the people who work for the district and he, he's the head of the district. So, uh, shout out to Dr. Robert Tozzi. Shout out to everybody else in the district for all the outstanding work that they do. Quick shout out to Mr. Shahada on an exceptional presentation that I believe, um, made a compelling argument to lots of people tonight, including many of my colleagues over here, also President Paris, uh, for, for his comments on, on the votes. I, I think these are powerful, compelling arguments, uh, that have been made today. And, uh, Commissioner Suarez, for, for us being able to disagree and still have decorum on this dais, I think that's, uh, very important in the committee meetings as well. And, um, you know, maybe sometimes it gets hot, but usually it's, it's club cooled down, thankfully, most of the time. I'd say about 90% of the time. Finally, happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there. Thank you for your time and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack. Commissioner Canova, you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
You have the floor. Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I want to, I commend my fellow commissioners on passing the increase that will at least allow us to continue to do what we do for our students. To me, the kids are the most vulnerable, vulnerable group that we have and their education determines our future. It makes Clifton a great place to live. So the better the schools do, the more attractive Clifton is to young buyers. And it's really just an investment in ourselves at that point. Uh, and unfortunately, school revenue is tax based, which means the only way that we can fund the school is from local taxpayers. Either, either that or the state and the federal government. And as we know, they, they are not kind to us. So we will continue that route to flight. You know, it's something we've been doing for a very long time. And just for clarification, this 3% is really a 2.95 because the state is funding the other 0.05%. Cause that's what they committed to do for anything over 2%. So as others mentioned, the NJSBA nominated committee name is Basford, their new president, so I'm thrilled on that decision. Judy, I know you're going to do great in this role, so congratulations to you. Also, congratulations, Dr. Robert Tozzi, on your Superintendent of the Year Award. You absolutely get my vote. To all the moms out there, happy Mother's Day and thank you to everyone. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Canova. Vice President Santiago?
Thank you, President Paris. Um, congratulations, Commissioner Basford. Congratulations, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Mr. Shahada Administration, thank you again for a great layman's terms budget presentation that the public can understand and very informative. The budget, you know, I wanted to add that there are towns that are going to be or have gone double digit, you know, above 10, 15. We're not doing that. There are towns that are closing schools, don't want to do that. And so, um, I am also proud of the way we comport ourselves. We give a good example, especially literally in front of our students who record and provide this feed to you guys every meeting. Thank you for that. But, um, the way, the, especially like a budget should be challenging a strenuous conversation, right? It's not, it's not something that's light and, and it shows that we're listening to each other and listening to other perspectives and being mindful of, of such an important thing. So thank you to everyone. You saw Mark, he's getting a free ride. You saw him ask his questions. Saw Emma Patar, I believe, sophomore, I think she is. Um, she talked about her academics, her athletic, um, hero and cool kids. Two examples right here of the investment and the return from what we do and from our budget. And that's just two, because there's plenty like that. Our, our graduating class is usually like six to 800. I don't know what it is now. It's usually like seven, it's closer to eight. We have a lot of examples. And so I just was so happy that they were here so that you can see that's the investment and the return on your money, on our property tax paying, property tax paying dollars. Really quickly, happy Jewish Heritage Month to all of our students, staff, school, celebrating our teachers. Thanks for all you do. Our school nurses, thanks for all you do. Special Education Week, kudos to all our special needs students and their achievements and our staff that supports them. Mental Health Awareness Week, um, protect your peace. Take time for you. Before you can go and try and help somebody else, make sure you're taking time for you. Asian American Pacific Islander Month, happy, uh, Asian American Pacific Islander to those who's celebrating. Principal Appreciation Day is today, I believe, right? So thank you to all of our principals for what they do. We were on break last week and last week was Admin Assistant or Admin Professional Week. So make sure that you recognized and shout or did something for them, I hope. But thank you to all of our admin assistants for all they do. They're the face of the schools. They, um, oftentimes the first person the student meets or the, the parent meets. So thank you for all they do for, uh, helping keep our schools together. Happy Mother's Day. By the time we meet again, um, my mom is in heaven, but my wife is also awesome and have a lot of other moms in my life. The cheer banner went up for our cheer team. I'm so happy about that. So our three-peat cheer team, your banner is up. This is last and just a personal, most, not most important, but very personal. My son Anthony Jr. is getting married tomorrow. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Anthony is a Clifton School product, Clifton High School graduate. He's a high school counselor now. He's amazing. His, my future daughter-in-law, Siobhan, is a Clifton School product, Clifton High School graduate. So two Mustangs are getting married tomorrow. It's another great day to be a Mustang. We're very happy. We're very grateful and we wish them lots of love and happiness. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. I also like to thank the board and, and not just for tonight and how we worked tonight, but how you work together all the time. I'm truly proud and appreciate it. Happy Moms' Day to my mom who's in Valley Hospital right now and hopefully, uh, on the, on the mend. Congratulations, Dr. Robert Tozzi, to be one of the Superintendent of the Years for, it's a, the by literacy award leader. Apparently Clifton is generating some of the most highest numbers of by literacy.
On the map where we should be.
Certified students. Couple of events that are coming up, uh, just to remind the public, there's a Mustang Band Car Wash every Saturday in May. So go to the high school, get your dirty car cleaned. It's, it's pretty cheap and, um, they do a really good job. On May 17th, the Clifton Community Band is having their annual concert. It's called Lollipops and Roses. It's the 22nd year of this concert. Half of the proceeds go to the Clifton Education Foundation, which ultimately ends up back helping our staff here in the schools. That's 2:00 PM at CHS on Saturday, May 17th. Uh, and on May 30th, the Clifton Education Foundation is having their first Tricky Tray. It's at the Boys and Girls Club at 6:00 PM. It's $25 in advance. You send your checks to the Clifton Education Foundation at PO Box 2071, ZIP code 07015, or go to their website for some information. I know every member on this board knows that we're not perfect here and knows that we can always do better and there's always ways to improve. One thing of value that, that you can monetize that we provide and often our most needy families in this district is pre-K for three and four-year-olds. And I don't know how many people know this, but in addition to just pre-K, um, students are evaluated and those that are, have learning challenges get early intervention and early help. That will only help them along in their school careers here in Clifton. And if you look at what it would cost if you went out and had pre-K program for your three and four-year-old, it would be, you would spend tens of thousands of dollars. Those of you who have done that on, on their own, like I have when my daughter was young, it's, it's quite a tremendous resource that we're providing and specifically to our most, uh, specifically most helpful to some of our most needful families. There's something I shared with the board here, um, a few weeks ago and I'd just like to share it with the public. And I'm going to take my extra time that I didn't take earlier in, in the meeting now. It's, it's a little story. And it's written by, uh, Jamie Volmer. Jamie Volmer is a former business executive and attorney, uh, who currently works to increase community support for public schools. The title of the article is "The Blueberry Story." If I ran my business the way you people operate your schools, I wouldn't be in business very long. I stood before an auditorium filled with outraged teachers who were becoming angrier by the minute. My speech had entirely consumed their precious 90 minutes of in-service training. Their icy, their initial icy glares had turned to restless agitation. You could cut the hostility with a knife. I represented a group of business people dedicated to improving public schools. I was an executive at an ice cream company that became famous in the mid 1980s when People Magazine chose its blueberry flavor as the best ice cream in America. I was convinced of two things. First, public schools needed to change. They were archaic, selecting and sorting mechanisms designed for the industrial age and out of step with the needs of our emerging knowledge society. Second, educators were a major part of the problem. They resisted change, hunkered down in their feathered nests, protected by tenure and shielded by a bureaucratic monopoly. They needed to look to business. We knew how to produce quality, zero defects, total quality management, continuous improvement. In retrospect, the speech was perfectly balanced, equal parts of ignorance and arrogance. As soon as I finished, a woman's hand shot up. She appeared polite, pleasant. She was in fact a razor-edged veteran high school English teacher who'd been waiting to unload. She began quietly. She began quietly. "We are told, sir, that you manage a company that makes good ice cream." I smugly replied, "Best ice cream in America, ma'am." "How nice," she said. "Is it rich and smooth?" "16% butterfat," I crowed. "Premium ingredients?" she inquired. "Super premium, nothing but AAA." I was on a roll. I never saw the next line coming. "Mr. Volmer," she said, leaning forward with a wicked eyebrow raised to the sky, "when you're standing on your receiving dock and you see an inferior shipment of blueberries arrive, what do you do?" In the silence of that room, I could hear the trap snap. I was dead meat, but I wasn't going to lie. "I send them back." "That's right," she barked, "and we can never send back our blueberries. We take them big, small, rich, poor, gifted, exceptional, abused, frightened, confident, homeless, rude, and brilliant. We take them with attention deficit disorder, junior rheumatoid arthritis, and English as your second language. We take them all, every one, and that, Mr. Volmer, is why it's not a business, it's a school." In an explosion, all 290 teachers, principals, bus drivers, aides, custodians, and secretaries jumped to their feet and yelled, "Yay, blueberries, blueberries!" Schools reflect the attitudes, beliefs, and health of the communities they serve, and therefore, to improve public education means more than changing our schools, it means changing America. And so began my long transformation. Since then, I've visited hundreds of schools. I've learned that school's not a business. Schools are unable to control the quality of their raw material. They're dependent upon vagaries of politics for reliable revenue stream, and they're constantly mauled by howling horde of disparate, competing customer groups that would send the best CEO screaming into the night. None of this negates the need for change. We must change what, when, and how we teach to give all children maximum opportunity to thrive in a post-industrial society. But educators cannot do this alone. These changes can occur only with understanding, trust, permission, and active support of the surrounding community. For the most important thing that I've learned is that schools reflect the attitudes, beliefs, and health of the communities they serve, and therefore, to improve public education means more than changing our schools, it means changing America. So I will leave you with that little bit of wisdom, and ask the board if there's any new business we need to discuss.
I have something.
Yes, Dr. Danny.
So I don't know if it's already in policy or heading there or something, 1548, the new sunscreen policy, which...
Sunscreen? Yes. We already, yeah, that has already been approved by us.
Okay. Is there any discussion on like how it will, you know, carry out, like, you know, because I know like students have, I mean, we're just discussing that, I mean, who's responsible for putting the sunscreen on the children and anything? I was just kind of curious.
It has to do with application of sunscreen, you're not allowed to do it, but also, I guess, making sure that kids have availability of sunscreen when they're out in open air activities.
President Paris, whatever legislation like this is passed, there's usually some guidance that comes out from the DOE supporting it on who, how, when, where, why.
Well, then, that's exactly what I was going to say, Mr. Shihada. We're expecting some guidance, haven't received that yet. So there's the law that's passed, and then the commissioner develops regulations to implement that law, and then, of course, the board passes a policy. So I have not seen those, I have not seen anything yet other than this. But obviously, we'll make sure we follow the law while making sure that, you know, we don't put our staff or students in a bad position, right? I mean, it's crazy. And again, another unfunded mandate from the state.
I don't think we've passed the budget because we wouldn't have any money for sunscreen.
We've got to get sunscreen in the budget now. And I know all about sunscreen because of my head, you know, you've got to be careful.
Anyone else?
And then...
Okay, we are going to have executives, oh, we have one more? Okay.
It's still about the next special meeting for the awards, if we could look into it, but hopefully by Monday.
I emailed Mr. Hamda just now, and he's going to check the calendar and get me dates.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think without even looking at the calendar, Mr. Mea, my only concern would be that June is just a busy month for everything. There's probably, I think, on my calendar, we have something almost every night. So I feel like if we change it now, there might be another group of people that won't be able to attend because of a different event. And I'm not sure what students we're recognizing that night, certainly some student athletes, but I do know we're recognizing, we'll be recognizing all of our Teachers of the Year that night, so there's a lot of staff in there, I'm not sure how many students, but we'll find out, and if we could change it to another night that's better, we will.
I know for a fact, when we were trying to find this date, it was the only date that was available because Clifton High School has something every night using the auditorium because they are hosting something for, I believe, the children who are going to Maple Valley. I believe they're also doing Woodrow and maybe Columbus simultaneously, so I know they're booked all of June, so we may have this meeting on a Saturday. I'm joking.
I was going to say I'm okay with a Saturday if you guys are.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we will have executive session today. We'll be discussing some personnel and legal matters. Action may or may not be taken. It will take us approximately, how long? 15? Okay, then we will say a half hour, and we'll take a five-minute break because I know Mr. Brunsack would like one. Motion to adjourn the executive session.
Motion, second.
By Commissioner Brunsack, second by Commissioner Baskford.
Action will be taken. Could you stand up?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion.
Motion to close.
Okay, welcome back. We're back from executive session. Roll call, Mr. Shada.
Ms. Basford.